Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here.
Councilmember Harris. And for the record, I expect Councilmember Ashby momentarily, and Councilmember Warren will be absent.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for getting it started here. Do do the pledge in the afternoon, or...
Maybe you'd like to?
Let's all rise, please, and begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the special meeting, of course, they're all special, of the Sacramento City Council, and for the beginning of an important day for our city. I'd like to welcome all of you. And do we have a consent calendar to begin this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a consent calendar, and I do have two items to read into the record.
Okay.
Item number 14 will be pulled in its entirety and will not be voted on. We've also added a supplement, item 22, which is car share and curbside electric vehicle, EV charging parking permits, to the consent calendar. And I do have two speakers on item number 22, which was added, but no speakers on it in the other items on consent.
Okay, and item 22 is what, if you could read, since it's not on the...
Item 22 is the car share and curbside electric vehicle EV charging parking permit.
Okay, so we do have two witnesses? Go ahead.
Two speakers on item 22. The first is Dermot Hickich, and then Richard Steinberg.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and staff. My name is Dermot Hickich, and I'm here on behalf of AAA Northern California and our shared mobility service, GIG CarShare, where I serve as head of new market development. I'm here today in support of Agenda Item 22, Car Share and Curbside EV Charging Parking Permits. GIG is the first shared mobility venture to be introduced by AAA. As you may know, we're a not-for-profit, member-based organization. For the past 118 years, AAA has been the driver's advocate, bringing safety to drivers and passengers on our roads. 118 years ago, we led the way into a new area where the horse and buggy began to be replaced by automobiles. Today, we're helping lead the way again into this new era where transportation is becoming increasingly connected, autonomous, shared, and electric. AAA is here today to support the accelerated and safe adoption of emerging mobility services. As hopefully one of your soon-to-be partners in zero emissions shared mobility, we are here to express our appreciation to the council and the Department of Public Work Staff for their commitment to this initiative. The city of Sacramento is developing one of the greenest and sound transportation policies in the country for enabling shared mobility solutions such as one-way car share. Following the success of our own one-way car share program in the Bay Area, GIG has continued to grow and now provides services to Alameda, Albany, Berkeley, Oakland, and to points in San Francisco. We are excited to have Electrify America award us the opportunity to launch a zero-emission one-way car share program in Sacramento, where we'll introduce the nation's largest fleet of fully-electric vehicles. Once we have permission to operate from the city of Sacramento, these GIG EVs will be available to all Sacramento residents who have a driver's license and good standing. We thank you for the opportunity to participate today. We look forward to continuing to partner with the city to bring benefits of shared mobility to the residents of Sacramento, namely improved regional travel, reduced congestion, improved air quality, and increased equitable access. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Richard Steinberg.
No relation.
No relation. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, and much impressed by Dermot hitting two minutes exactly. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Rich Steinberg with Electrify America. As some of you hopefully have been reading some of the media reports, we've been excited about our investment here in the city, which is our green city, as part of our overall $2 billion investment over the next 10 years in electric vehicle infrastructure and access. We're very excited to participate with the city. We've been working closely with the parking team, with the city management team, to come up with a program that makes a lot of sense for multiple members of the citizens of the community. We have three different programs, one of which we're talking about today, which is the zero-emissions car share. We have two different versions of that, one of which is the GIG version, which is the free float, as well as the station-based envoy service, which is spiced throughout the city and almost all the council districts, with 75% of our focus is on low-income and disadvantaged communities. We also are supporting the Franklin Boulevard shuttle, which will be a news item tomorrow as that service launches, and then we'll be supporting the conversion of those over to electric. And also the UC Davis route, which we're going to be increasing frequency, working with Yolo Transit and with SACRT to provide an electric version of that service to UC Davis and to the city. So we're very excited. We think this is very important, that the zero-emissions car share parking permit move forward. It's equitable, we're paying, our GIG in this case is going to be basically making sure that the revenue that would normally be earned through the meters is in fact paid for even with the car share vehicles, but the users of the service will be able to park at any legal parking spot and not have to pay for that privilege. So I appreciate the councilmembers' review of this policy, and we're looking forward to working with the city as this program launches. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steinberg. Appreciate it. Consent calendar's been moved and seconded. Okay, Vice Mayor? All in favor, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Guerra, first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to say a couple thank-yous here, and then some focus. But first, I do want to thank our park staff for their work on May Fong Park. And I know May Fong, for those who knew her, was a great advocate for the community. Second, I do want to thank the public work staff on the grant applications that we're going to submit for some highway safety. But on the BikeMaster plan, I do want to continue to encourage the staff to look at the issues we've had on Broadway and the recent two fatalities that we've had, and I want to make sure that we're looking at long-term on how we can better address some of those pedestrian issues. I know we've had meetings on that, but with that, I want to say a couple thank-yous, and just reminding on a couple priorities in the district.
Very good. Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, could you have someone get with me on item number seven? The charter, the chapter relating to short-term rentals? It seems like to me we're in the middle of a housing crisis, and we are taking potential rentals off the market by allowing an expanded use of short-term rentals. I'd like to understand that better. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Carr, Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Electrify America for all their work on helping get this policy for electric car sharing up and running, and the curbside charging, as well Jennifer Venema from Public Works has been really tireless on this as well. Thank you for all your work.
Let me add to that as well. This is a big advance for our city, and to take the $44 million award last year and within the course of a year, to be at the point of this aggressive and robust of an implementation, I could not be more pleased. And I'm glad you mentioned, Mr. Steinberg, not only the electric vehicle, rental vehicles that will be available to tens, you know, to thousands of Sacramentoans, but I'm glad you highlighted the electric vehicle shuttle service, which hopefully will, you know, when we're all said and done, it'll be 15-minute service between UC Davis and the city. That is going to open up the possibilities of an even greater Aggie Square, an even greater connection between UC Davis and our city, and will have long-lasting, long-lasting benefits. So thank you. It's a great, great advance. All right. Councilmembers having spoken, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. The consent calendar passes. We now have, we have two items on our afternoon agenda. They are both workshop items, if you will. I know, I know that the members have talked a lot about the desire to have more intensive time together in public session, to be able to talk about important issues. Later, I will detail some of what we plan for the next several weeks in terms of our agenda, and there will be many workshops, because I think this is an important, maybe slight shift that we'd like to make in terms of ensuring that we're spending real time talking about the most significant opportunities and challenges facing our city. So we begin today as Measure U, of course, and we will take presumably a vote tonight. But today, we want to talk about this with the community and amongst ourselves, and we want to begin here, and not unintentionally, for those who wonder about agenda order here, not unintentionally, with the policy of taking comprehensive intentional actions to increase and diversify our economic growth in an inclusive and equitable manner. And I'd like to bring up Mike McKeever, who of course was my chief of staff last year. This year is our special consultant, who has helped lead the effort along with other members of the city staff. I want to thank city manager Howard Chan and your team, because it's been another real partnership, around Project Prosper, which has been our months-long effort to dive into this and to, and to begin charting a course. And I'd like Mike to make a report about its conclusions, and let that begin generating a discussion as we move to the next item, which is the Measure U item. Mr. McKeever.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been at this podium a few times in my life, but I believe this is the first time as a city of Sacramento employee, so thank you for giving me a few minutes. And I want to add to the mayor's thanks to the council for providing both policy and resources to conduct Project Prosper, and specifically to city manager Howard Chan for putting together a first-class staff and consultant team led by his, Amy Williams, and Dr. Doreen Hackler, an economist, and Wendy Hoyt, for civic engagement. And I'm here, in fact, pinch-hitting for Dr. Hackler, who is out of town today. So Project Prosper's purpose is very simple. It is to figure out ways to structurally change the trajectory of economic growth in this city, so that we can both add to the quantity of that growth and add to the quality of that growth. And specifically on the quality side, we mean that this is intentionally focused at all parts of the city. That means all geographies, all socioeconomic components of your residents, and all ages, from young, very young, to seniors. The resolution in front of you today does two simple things. Should you adopt it, you will be on record as fully embracing the policy commitment to increase economic health for all segments of your city, and to direct your city manager to bring to you plans for implementing that policy. As you know, your background materials include a good deal of information on the process that we have gone through over the last year, and I am not going to spend my few brief minutes going over the diagnosis of the problem of the state of our economy. You all know it, and there's a lot of information and data in this document that highlight those challenges. What I want to do is briefly summarize the process that was used, and six substantive learnings that came that are key to where we are at this stage in the process. You should also know that coming to you soon will be, it's under internal review with city manager and his staff now, a very detailed additional report from Dr. Hackler that goes over detailed best practices and case studies around the country, and makes recommendations for implementing the ideas that are most relevant to this city. The process was quite broad-based, given the amount of time we had. We put together a group of four national experts, led by Amy Liu, who's the director of the Metropolitan Policy Project for the Brookings Institute out of Washington, DC, and three others from DC and Chicago and Portland. As you know, we put together a group of regional and local economic experts. Each of you had an appointee to that working group. They met several times, and we held four community meetings, geographically dispersed, well-attended, very interactive. We got a lot of good opinions and advice from people throughout the community. This effort was also benefited by a Corral Area Companion Project done by GSAC, Mary Broom's Organization, and Valley Vision, and CACOG, who hired Brookings to do a quantitative based study of the regional economy. So there was close interlap between those efforts. In terms of the substance of where we are so far, and I want to stress, this is a work in process. We're not, all of the details are not yet filled in, but I think there are six key learnings that I just want to briefly touch on. First is that we're focused on the structural foundational elements of the economy, what an economist would call growing base sector or primary sector jobs, the kind of jobs that create wealth. This region, in my opinion, has too often been confused about what is the real basis of economic growth, and we've focused on land development projects. Not that we don't like land development projects, but they don't occur unless you have a wealth engine generating the money to shop in the stores and pay the rents and pay the mortgages. So if you think of a metaphor of a tree, it's the roots and the trunk that we're interested in. You don't get the pretty branches, flowers, and leaves unless you have a really strong root system and trunk, and that's what we're trying to get at with this project. So that's the first point. Be focused on the structure, the foundation. Secondly, is we have to have an all-in strategy. It must be comprehensive. There's no single silver bullet that we can pick from someplace else and say, if we just do this here, all sorts of wonderful things are going to happen. This issue is not that simple. So there are three main elements we focused on. The first is people, and we learned that education is an economic development strategy in and of itself, and we need many more people who are trained in the skills that the new economy requires, especially digital skills. We learned it's important to start at pre-K and go clear through high school, higher ed, and adult learning. And we need, we learn by looking at our graduation rates and how we transition to college, and how many people who graduate from college here actually stay, that we need to do much better at getting people through K through 12 and into higher ed, and then inducing them to stay here and put to work the learnings that they have accrued here. The second bucket is businesses, and we really, the high-level learning here is we need to focus on our existing businesses. We have many small businesses. We don't have many medium-sized businesses. They need technical assistance and sometimes financial assistance to be more profitable and to be able to grow, and that's where we'll get the real meaningful job creation. It doesn't mean we don't like to attract other businesses into our area. We do, but we really need to focus on growing the business owners and the entrepreneurs that are here now. And we also need far better linkages between our higher education institutions and our private sector, so we get much more spin-off benefit coming out of the million, hundreds of millions of dollars of research and intellectual capital that has grown in our higher education facilities, but is not turning into the jobs that we need. And thirdly, we learned that building good places, the kinds of places you are committed to in your excellent general plan and zoning code and some of the community plans, because building a good place turns out to be an economic development strategy in and of itself. Those are the kind of places that today's young workers want to live. They want urban, mixed-use, active neighborhoods with a variety of transportation options, including electric vehicles, and that's what's going to attract tomorrow's workforce to your city. The third high-level learning is that we, and this is probably the most important of the six, we must be intentionally and passionately inclusive. We have to focus on reversing the substantial and growing income gap, which is leaving a small group of haves and a much-too-large group of have-nots, and fewer and fewer people in the middle. Economic growth and social equity are not oppositional forces. We can't have real economic growth without social equity. The social equity element cannot be an afterthought. It has to be the centerpiece of what we're doing here with our economic growth strategy. The costs of systemic poverty are swamping the public sector's financial capacity and shrinking rather than growing our revenue base. Fourth big learning, we must be authentic. We must find the unique, local, sometimes hidden assets and build on them. We need much better networks and connectivity between businesses and tomorrow's entrepreneurs, talking and working with each other to do the tough digging to find the market opportunities we are uniquely situated to exploit. Other cities and regions are doing this basic blocking and tackling and growing their economies by doing this hard work. Fifth, we must be place and neighborhood-based, but within the context of the entire city. Neighborhoods are at different evolutionary stages. You all know this, they're different within each of your districts, let alone across the eight of your districts. And so each neighborhood is going to need its own unique approach. But one-off neighborhood plans that are single-topic based and not connected to a citywide, integrated, and systemic strategy are more costly and less impactful than we need and our residents deserve. Lastly, sixth, we must bring resources to the table. Best practice research finds that while one size doesn't fit all, and that there is no silver bullet approach, we can simply take off the shelf and copy. All successful initiatives around the country have brought significant resources to the challenge. It's often a combination of much better, more conscious, and purposeful alignment of existing resources and new local resources that get the job done. We need both, more alignment and more local resources. And it occurs to me, as I was just coming up here, that there's a quick object lesson here that I think really applies in an issue that all of you have spent so much time on, which is the homeless issue. I remember very early in, after the seating of the new mayor and the council, in your mid-year budget, you had the opportunity where there were a few million dollars available, and you decided to put several millions of those dollars towards tackling the homeless problem. And you didn't know exactly what you were going to do with that money at that time or exactly, but you knew it was a problem, and you made a commitment to do it. And look what happened with what I believe was a $5 million commitment. Over the next several months, you got the attention of your other main partner in here, and several tens of millions of dollars were committed to add to that. Several of your private sector partners in the health sector added several millions of dollars, and the state of California, seeing your leadership, picked up the phone and called and offered to qualify your city for a major grant program that no other in the city and the state qualified for. That $5 million bill was leveraged 20, or 30, or 40 times, but it all started with the commitment of this organization to see a need and say, you know, we may not know precisely how we're going to solve this, but we know we have to be in the game. So while resources alone don't guarantee success, you all know that. Project Prosper's work to date clearly indicates that resources deployed consistent with the concepts included in the resolution before you will create a real opportunity for meaningfully improving the economic well-being of your current and future residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. I appreciate it. More importantly, appreciate the work and everybody who really put a lot of detailed thought and time into thinking deeper about an inclusive economy here in Sacramento. And I say the same to my colleagues on the city council. Thank you for not only attending many of these meetings, but for being so present and identifying economic development, I think, as I've taken it right from our retreats and elsewhere, economic development as one of our top-tier, if not our top-tier priority here in Sacramento. The same to Howard Chan, the city manager, and the entire city team. All right, we have no public testimony on this item before we get to the main event, as they say, but I thought that this was a very important, very, very important fundamental precursor to that discussion. And so I have no members up to comment on the report itself, except for councilmember Shanir and Guerra. Good? They're up? Jay.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time and all the work, Mike, that you and Doreen did, and also was very happy about the four community convenings that you put together, and the numbers of people, and I think it was probably around 400 or so altogether that came to those events to really engage with the city about the city's future. I think that a lot of times, we go out to the community as such, and we get 10 or 20 people to show up, and they're listening and spoken to, but I think the way that they were done was good, and the results of it, I think, were really important. I just want to put in a couple of comments here. First of all, this work is really difficult, and I think that what it's going to require from us as a council is not only decisions to be made this year, but persistence and patience, that what we're trying to do is, and you started off what you were talking about, we're fundamentally changing the way we do business, and also the way we think about things, so that we shouldn't be doing anything that is one-off, that all of the projects, and particularly the larger projects, kind of contribute to these six principles. So I think that's really important, and what I would ask, assuming that we go forward with this resolution, what I would ask the city manager is that as things are brought forward, that this is the lens that we look through, so that we can evaluate ourselves on keeping to the set of principles, so that we're not doing this as a one-off today, but that it continuously comes back to us as we make decisions around the budget and around large projects. So this is a lens that we should be using on an ongoing basis. The other thing that I would say is that we have to be able to take strategic risks. We need to think about risk and reward in everything we do, but we can't fall back into the way we've always done things on a continuous basis. There will be risk in decisions we make. There will be probably risk in decisions we make this afternoon or tonight, but going forward, thinking about the opportunities that we have and that we can seize on. I think that with this mayor, this council, and this city manager, and our staff, we can be a leader in California about how to move forward out of some of the financial difficulties that we've had, and a big part of that, as the mayor has discussed many times, is growing our economy. We can't be satisfied with where we are, and we can't be satisfied with the incremental growth, because that's not going to get us to the point where we can provide for our neighborhoods what they need, for our young people what they need to be successful in school and life and in career. So with that, I will end, but I just want to say thank you for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay. The only thing I would add is that, and I should have said this, is that this item comes with a requested action, which is the resolution attached to the staff report that is intended, actually, just as what you said, which is the fulcrum and the filter by which the manager and the council evaluates whether or not a project or an idea is consistent with this goal of inclusive economic growth and all that's contained therein.
I think the goal and the strategies, the framework that's contained within it.
Correct.
And with that, I'm happy to move the item.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, let me ask councilmember Guerra to speak.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this work, and I know this is leading up to our following item, and so I find it critical that we do have these priorities and principles, and first off, I'll commend the staff for all of their community work and outreach and the focus on all those points. A couple things here. I think I'm glad to see that the point on the issue of childcare being as a focal point. I saw it in the Project Prosper report, and I think for a lot of folks, after the downturn of the economy and the loss of some of the facilities that we've had, it's been an impediment for people to get back into the workforce without that access to childcare, let alone the connections of early childhood education and all the benefits that happen. So I want to thank that, all the folks involved on the community side and the staff... So I want to thank that, all the folks involved on the community side and the staff for making sure that that's priority. Little shameless plug, we are doing a listening session with all the childcare providers this Saturday at the George Simms Center to look at solutions on how we can move forward on this. The second issue is on the innovation centers. Again, how do we, I like this focal point on how do we grow our own, both with SacState and UC Davis. We have a lot of talent that we're grooming here. Most of our regional students come from our city, go to these institutions, both at the City College, and then they transfer over to SacState or UC Davis. And then looking at the innovation centers as our own places to inspire, create new businesses, and making sure that we control the future of our destiny, both whether it's Aggie Square on Stockton Boulevard and Broadway Corridor, or if it's the Sacramento Center for Innovation over in the Power and Alliance, or if it's downtown at the, with all of the different hacker labs and the pop-up co-working places that are opening up. I think that's a, that from, is, can show our own residents how we're going to not go after the great white whale and bring that in, but basically grow our own here and make sure that we inspire more folks. But the piece here that I think is missing, and I'd like to see included in here, is a clear commitment and statement to some of our dying corridors, our struggling corridors. And you could probably piece it together from different components of the end of the resolution here, and maybe extrapolate what we want to accomplish, but I want to show an example of how, in the downtown area, we spent over $2 million in creating a plan, and we hired consultants to put this plan together, to give us a framework of how we're going to expand our core. In the future, we want to not do these one-offs, as you said, and have a vision. Well, four years ago, we hired some more consultants to look at Stockton, it might have been more than four years ago now, it was before the recession, we hired some consultants to look at the Urban Land Institute, to look at Stockton Boulevard, and find solutions or things to do that. But that plan got produced, put on a shelf, and then it sat there. We may in the future be looking at other projects, and we're going to hire some, another institute, or, and we'll get a fancy report that might be put on a shelf. But the fact is, is that every time we hire a consultant to do this kind of work for us, is that intellectual property, all of that information gets lost with that piece. I would like to see a clear commitment to our commercial corridors, to develop a targeted, cross-disciplined team of staff, that when they're finding a challenge for one corridor, whether it's Del Paso Heights, whether it's Stockton Boulevard, or Franklin Boulevard, that we make it clear in this area here that we're making that commitment to those folks. And I could see it fit in between Section D7 and D8. And unless we make that clear, that we're going to reinvigorate some of those areas, I like how the number eight, D8, is so clear, but I'd like to see some language that says to develop a targeted, cross-disciplined team to focus on our commercial corridors. And if, and if you'll take that as a second, or a friendly amendment, I will second, oh, it's already been seconded, but I, I will, that's what I would like to see before I can vote for this item, Mr. Mayor. I want a commitment to our corridors.
And I fully support that. And by the way, that's kind of the point of the whole effort in many, I mean, that's overstated a little bit, but it really is the core of the point here. And so Councilmember Shanir, would you consider that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the first presentations I came to at the City Council was a presentation on economic development. I think I was sitting right where Les Simmons is sitting, and the Economic Development Director listed a list of activities, almost 100 of them, that they were about to pursue, and the council approved those activities. But the missing link was, what are you trying to do? What outcome are you looking for? And Mike knows I'm a policy guy, and I just wrote our policy statement that will go into the, one of the goals is a diversified, inclusive economy, which I think covers all of the areas. And it gives us a place, as Jay said, to bounce ideas against. I expect the specific activities will change, I expect the approaches will change, but the outcome is clear. And if we pass this, if we agree with this, then we give our staff the direction that they need in order to make this happen. So I really appreciate the work, Mike, and I really appreciate the succinct statement that you came up with. We can implement this in our goals for what we are trying to achieve as a city, and then we can check ourselves, monitor those every year to see how we are doing towards producing a diversified, inclusive economy. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carr. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. When this project started, it was under sort of a different moniker, which was that of neighborhood economic development. And as Mr. McKeever knows, I was confused by that, because most neighborhoods don't want businesses in them, they want them adjacent on commercial corridors, like Councilmember Gera talked about. But it spoke to this bigger question about what we're trying to get to with changing the face of our city's economy. In 2011, in the midst of the worst recession in the modern era, a couple of things became clear. We were over-relying on the construction sector, which was a point that was made earlier, which is an indicator of, should be an indicator of economic activity, but instead here it was a leader. The other thing is that the Business Journal nationally looked at cities' reliance on government, and I remember, because I was running at the time for the seat, and I would ask people, what is the number one city in the country for reliance on government jobs? Invariably, the answer was Washington, DC. People were astounded when I said, no, Washington, DC is number 10. Sacramento as a city was number one, with 33% of our jobs as government jobs. Our region, though, was number two, at 28.5% reliance on government jobs. That speaks to several things. One is, we are sort of the Detroit of government, in a way, and the state was General Motors, and certainly during the recession, when state revenues collapsed, the mayor knows it better as pro tem and assembly member, but it was horrific. They felt it in Los Angeles and San Francisco, but we were knocked on our, on our back here in Sacramento because of our reliance on, particularly state government and the ripple effects of decline in sales tax, which rides the economy very closely, and then the lagging indicators of property tax, which can be reset in a recessionary environment where values go lower. And it's taken many years to climb out of that hole. The state has recovered, has a rainy day fund. We've restored our economic uncertainty reserve, which was depleted during the recession. But we learned a lot during that timeframe, and I think the overall lessons that I come away from this plan on is, one, we can affect to some extent the microenvironment of our city, how we help businesses, how we attract investment. The macroeconomic trends, we will still be the state capital, we still need to build housing in particular, which that construction sector is the one that was leading before, particularly with subdivision, construction in various parts of the region. But we can bend the curve on some of those things. And what I hear today is, we've discovered, which is not lost on most of the people in this audience, that economic growth in this recession has not been equal. Some have recovered much more quickly, and others have lagged, and I don't think that's a surprise to any city in the country who's seen particularly low-income communities decimated with the loss of housing because of predatory lending in the mortgage area. And, and the fact that we need to reposition ourselves to adjust for that is long overdue. I think part of the challenge, though, is realizing what we can affect. Attracting employers is one piece, and I know Barry's here from Greater Sacramento Economic Council, GSAC, and that's what they're doing, trying to retain and attract new employers. I think the growth of the education sector is a huge one, and what President Nelson and Chancellor May are doing, I think are part of that education side of growing our workforce, but also literally those as economic engines. And Councilmember Gary, you mentioned the Innovation Center, I think that's truly a phenomenal piece of our economic future. I think the harder thing is how we get into some of the deeper pockets of need in our community to bring those people to the table, or bring the table to them, frankly, through a plan like this. And while this is only a framework, it says a lot of lovely things, this doesn't yet bind us to anything. And I think in the end, good intentions can pave the way to places that people are afraid to go, but I think that we need a plan ultimately that helps us bend that curve. And whether or not it's Project Prosper, I don't know, but I know that in our communities, the state capital is only one piece of our identity. We have a thriving healthcare sector, which continues to grow. We have many generational, intergenerational challenges that we're trying to address. I think that the work we're doing through our Creative Economy Grants, by providing STEM and STEAM programs into disadvantaged communities is a big step. But I would echo what Mr. Gera said, which, according to SAICOG, if we just filled in our commercial corridors, the 1950s development with two- and three-story buildings that provide a housing over commercial, we could fill our region's growth needs for, I think it's 20 years or 50 years, I can't remember the exact number, but is a tremendous opportunity for very low-value use of land. I also think that, frankly, the state, because they don't pay taxes, they don't pay property taxes or the other things, we need to be able to bring in those other folks who can build, so the valuation of our land is high enough to support our schools, because most of our property tax dollars goes to schools. The city gets about 23% of that, and the county gets 19%. But making sure that when we weather recession, particularly those of you who may watch Game of Thrones, winter is coming. We don't know when it's coming, but it's coming, and there are, there's sort of a recessionary environment forming because of tariffs, trade wars, all those other things. And I think we've got to be very careful how to be strategic in using our resources so that we don't set ourselves up to fail on the promises we're making through a document like this, but that also we're covering our flank and making sure that we're prepared, whether that's building housing, take pressure off of the supply, or literally building affordable housing, because that is a critical part of our current housing crisis, or just providing the modern skills that employees need to be able to compete, whether that's a degree or apprenticeships or other things. I think that this plan has tremendous promise, but like any promise, the proof is in the pudding. So I hope, I hope that this framework is something that we can continue to build on, but I am by no means naive to the fact that there's a lot more work to come, and that the people in this audience, who I know a lot of them, are really, while we may vote on this plan, it's going to be up to you to help us do it. And the people in the city who, who may have a chance to help us with this, whether it's through the Measure U conversation or other things, they have to hold us equally accountable.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's tough to follow an oration like that. I have a pretty simple comment, and that is, it seems, it should not seem like a novel idea to set a goal and then track metrics to see if you achieve that goal, but that's exactly what we're doing on the Policy Governance Ad-Hoc Committee, and this work, Project Prosper, dovetails with that extremely well. So this is a very easy program to support.
Very good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in to say that I think Project Prosper, which was intended, I believe, to be a primer of the whole city's view on economic development and how that sort of integrates with the Measure U goals, whether those are public safety, or essential services, or transportation, or economic development. I think you've tried really hard to find that balance in here and allow space for us still as a council and a body to identify, based on a per-neighborhood basis, what would be best to sort of lift all boats in a high tide. And I think it's a good primer, I think it's a good launching point, and it is a good conversation to, to mend with Measure U, because as we go forward with this ballot measure, and we talk about it in the next go-around of this meeting, there will be a lot of priorities, and how we whittle down those priorities needs to be based on the dialogues we've had in the community and the expectations that people have as they kind of come back to this council chambers and ask us for services. So for example, for me, in the Project Prosper conversation side of economic development, probably land with Councilmember Gera, I think the thing I saw rise to the top was childcare. And for me, and in my district, and in the northern part of the city where they talked about it, that seemed very much to be a point that kind of came up on every point. It's like, yes, we want college, yes, we want jobs, but all of those things, we need more and better and more reasonable access to childcare. So while Councilmember Gera has done a good job working with the local providers, I think the two of us together are looking for ways to solve this issue from a variety of standpoints. So for example, we asked for an audit, asked for an audit of city properties that could be used to add more childcare into the mix, and Howard's team has been working on that, has drafted early concepts on that. That is the type of thing that both Project Prosper and Measure U will help us achieve in the years to come, that will allow people to work, that will allow kids to get ahead academically, that will allow us to provide equity in neighborhoods where there hasn't always been an equity for young people to get access to early education, and for parents to have a great program to send their kids to. And by the way, conversation still remains ahead about how do we best achieve that, but I assume it will be not only by us increasing inventory, but by building partnerships, like with Child Action, or other nonprofits throughout the region that do a good job of childcare, the Freedom Schools, the groups that are already doing this, but how do we get more kids in there? How do we get more families involved? How do we help people get back to work and feel good about where their kids are? So, good work, and looking forward to the next half of this dialogue.
Thank you very much. I'm going to save most of my comments for the next item, but I just, on this particular item, I can't let it go without trying to put this into a bit of a more modern and recent context. And that is to ask the question, what do we do in the wake of Stephon Clark? It's a question that is asked in these chambers, sometimes loudly and unpleasantly, every single week. But when we reflected in the immediacy of that horrific event, there was a common acknowledgement that while the issues between the members of the law enforcement community and communities of color are vital to address, that the even more important issue to address is systemic poverty and the lack of hope that too many people in our communities and too many of our kids have. And this resolution and the next item, in large part, is intended to address the challenge that we face here every week and every year around how do we develop more capacity? And we currently have insufficient capacity, more capacity, to be able to answer that question and those questions in a meaningful way, as opposed to wringing our collective hands, which we often do, and say, "I wish we could do more." Let's take a vote on the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, the resolution passes. Let's move to the next item, and I'm going to begin, if you don't mind, and then turn it over. No Consuelo Hernandez is going to give a presentation, if you will, on the, largely the mechanics and the nuts and bolts. But I want to, again, just leave off where I finished a moment ago and frame this discussion, because this is the main event, and, and what we will be talking about today and tonight. Members of the council, I will not repeat my June 7 speech, we'll incorporate it by reference. But let me say the following: When we look back upon our years together as a council and as a community, today will be a day we remember as the day Sacramento defined its future. This morning, I attended an event sponsored by Kaiser Permanente called "The Institute for a Competitive Inter-City." for a Competitive Inner City." And what Kaiser Permanente is doing, simply, they are investing a couple hundred thousand dollars in providing mentorship, introductions to capital, and wraparound help for about 50 small businesses, all for a couple hundred thousand dollars, to enable more small businesses to launch and grow throughout our entire, our entire city. And so I ask you this question. Imagine what we could do, not only to grow small businesses, but to attract and retain larger clean industries, add thousands of jobs, invest in affordable housing, in young people, and in public safety, with an additional $25 to $50 million a year to invest in our people. That is the opportunity presented to us today. I want to state clearly what I believe to be the city's first and most important priority. It is to provide for the public safety of our people and to maintain and enhance basic and vital services for our residents. I present to you today, and this has, of course, been discussed for many, many months, a non-traditional, but I believe bold idea about how to fulfill our most important mission. Simply put, I believe strongly that the only way over time we will have the means to enhance public safety and enhance our core services is to grow a high-wage economy, build more workforce and affordable housing, and prepare more young people from our neighborhoods for the modern Sacramento economy. Until we put our own skin and resources into the opportunity to grow in the right way, we will manage, all right. We will hope there is some way to address deficits, or the next recession, as the Vice Mayor mentioned a moment ago, and we will create even more waiting lists for the public and private projects that we now just dream about. This has been the Sacramento experience, and I hope we can talk about that experience in some detail today. This, of course, what is being proposed is a general tax. As such, our vote tonight does not commit us to any specific investment. It only gives us the opportunity to change our neighborhoods for the better and to set a bold economic trajectory for our future. For those who disagree or have an alternative, which is, I said many months ago at Project Prosper, which is, which is not only okay, it's what's to be expected, this is democracy. I only ask you to please address the following questions. How do we accomplish more robust economic growth? How do we create more opportunity? How do we address the systemic poverty of our low-income neighborhoods without the resources and without the active partnership of our city? How do we fund more affordable housing? The crisis of not just the moment, but the crisis of many months in our city without a robust housing trust fund, as opposed to the paltry housing trust fund that we currently have. And finally, a comment about accountability, and I appreciate what Councilmember Harris said in his comments on the last item. Going forward with a general tax and laying out a vision, even a specific vision, for how we should invest these new resources requires both that we identify real metrics ahead of time as to how we intend to measure our success, whether it's jobs, housing, opportunity, public safety. And it also requires, in my view, a, the establishment of a community investment commission that is even more robust than the old Measure U Accountability Commission that was passed in 2012. For there are critics out there, and I know some are in the audience here today, and that's, again, all part of the democracy as well, who believe that Mayor Steinberg has one motive here, and that is to raise one cent and pave all the extra money into paying off our pension debt. Well, that's sure what I came back from the California State Senate pro temship to run for mayor, to, to champion. I, I can only hold myself accountable and only say very publicly that if this was just about putting money, just about putting money into the general fund, and I think we're going to need to put some money into the general fund for public safety and for police and fire, and for parks and for other things, and that'll be a discussion we have if this, and when this passes. But my intention is to create capital for economic growth and for housing, and I want to be held accountable to that. And the best way to be held accountable to that is to have the right sort of Community Investment Accountability Commission and to identify the metrics that we intend to measure these investments by well before we take this measure to the voters in November. I look forward to today's discussion. Thank you. Consuelo?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Consuelo Hernandez, the Director of Governmental Affairs, here today, presenting on Item 21, the proposed ballot measure relating to a Transactions and Use Tax for the November 6th ballot. I wanted to take a second and provide a little context to remind everyone of how we got to this place. In 2012, there was a, as Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Hanson has mentioned, there was a deep national recession. It had significantly reduced the city's revenue that was available to fund essential city services. Between 2007 and 2012, the city eliminated more than 1,300 FTE positions, which equated to a workforce reduction of more than 25%. What did this mean? A loss of over 150 police officers, browning out of three fire stations, elimination of most of our youth and senior services, reduced library hours, drastic cuts to park maintenance and safety, partial closure, closure of community centers and clubhouses, and the closure of our community and waiting pools. In response, voters in November 2012 passed Measure U, putting in place a half-cent Transactions and Use Tax that expires in March, on March 31st, 2019. Thanks to the revenue generated by Measure U, we are able to support 422 positions, and these include 90 positions in the Fire Department, 195 in the Police Department, including sworn officers, public safety counterstaff, communications, forensics, and crime analysis. We also have 130 positions in YPSI, making our parks safer and more user-friendly for both residents and visitors, as well as restoring the operation of our swimming and waiting pools. We also used Measure U to fund priority capital, capital investments for the city's facilities. This includes replacement of fire stations 14 and 15, purchasing body-worn cameras and ShotSpotter system, park infrastructure improvements, including pool renovations and play area and sports field improvements, Camp Sacramento repairs and improvements, and roof replacements at libraries, amongst other things. Unfortunately, increases to basic costs of providing services and the continuing decay of facilities and infrastructure threaten the city's ability to protect and maintain critical public safety and quality of life services, as well as our ability to make investments in key strategic initiatives to grow our local economy. General fund revenues have not grown at a rate that would permanently close the gap between revenues and expenditures caused by the continuation of services that were restored through Measure U. Without an extension, the city would no longer be able to support these restored programs and services, and the only recourse would be to return to pre-Measure U reductions in these program and service areas. The Budget and Audit Committee previously has discussed a Transactions and Use Tax ballot measure at their June 12th and June 26th meetings. Today, we have before you a draft ordinance, which, if passed by the voters, would put in place a one-cent Transactions and Use Tax. The ordinance also includes requirements for an independent annual audit and a Citizens' Oversight Committee. Also included in today's item is a proposed ballot question language for the council's review, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Harris, I know you're up on the board. We, we do have 14 speakers, what, after a public comment? Fair enough. Okay. Members can sign up on the tote board. Again, we're not taking a vote this afternoon. This is intended as a workshop, free-for-all, public discussion. Okay. Let us begin with the public testimony. We have 14 people signed up to speak, and let us, let us begin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Darrell Roberts, then Barry Broome, then Kathy Cresswell. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I mean, the, the standard rule, again, we're going to ask folks if they can speak to, speak for two minutes if possible, so we can get through as much of the testimony as possible. We appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Darrell Roberts, resident of District 2, CEO of Roberts Land Development Center. I stand before you in favor of Measure U. But I want to give you a little history. I want to think, think it was eight years ago when we last passed Measure U, there was a, a postcard that was sent out to voters expressing support for Measure U. That postcard went to high-propensity voters. It came from most of the nonprofit heads in town at that, at that time. Many of us who spoke openly of supporting Measure U, because we were promised that funding from Measure U would go to community-based organizations. About four or five days later, many, we were invited to a meeting at Boys and Girls Club, and I remember walking in that meeting somewhat excited about the conversation about to have, but walking out of that meeting very, very disappointed, disgusted, angry, and frustrated by the process that we had been invited to participate in. It was with that in mind that I stand in front of you, Mayor Steinberg, and councilmembers supporting Measure U, but also saying, my hope is that you remember that you have all talked about youth development as a primary, and economic development in, in neighborhoods most in need, as a primary component and reason for doing Measure U. I recognize that the Police Department is, is clamoring for its piece of Measure U and the increase, but quite frankly, our, our citizens and the communities most in need need Measure U as a way to invest in our neighborhoods, both youth development as well as economic development. My hope is that you spend up to 25, to, up to $25 million on economic development and youth development. That's my hope. I'll continue to look at-
Roberts, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
I'll, I'll be short. My hope is that you do that, and while we, while we're looking at that, also look at the previous ordinance that you talked about, to make sure we look at those toughest neighborhoods that need to be-
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Our next speaker is Barry Broome.
Thank you, Darrell.
Next speaker is Barry Broome, then Kathy Cresswell, then Frank Louie.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome to you, sir.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, two minutes, I'll do my best.
Minutes, man. You can do it. You can do it.
Okay, I'll do it.
Speak fast.
First, I want to say how much confidence I have in you, Mayor, and your leadership and judgment, and that I trust you completely, and I know I speak for everyone associated with our organization.
Thank you.
As well as the council and the city manager. I think we're one of the most improved cities in the US in leadership and accomplishing things, and I think we should celebrate that and build on the confidence. So I'm here as a proud Sacramento, still transplant, but it's getting in my blood. This is what changes economies. The ability to create targeted public investment models and public-private partnerships around great institutional assets like UC Davis and Sacramento State. We're confident we can create 15,000 to 20,000 high-wage jobs just at Aggie Square. Very confident. And a tradable sector job, as Mr. McKeever was saying, creates two or three or four more jobs. The challenge with a government job is it barely creates another half a job. And as we know, in order to work for the government, you have to have a graduate degree, they're very sophisticated jobs. And actually, the irony between a government-based economy, it's creating a lot of our inclusion problems, because we don't have a front door, an entry point to, to the, to the community. So tradable sectors, you know, we, there are only 50,000 tradable sector jobs in the region. It's a very dangerously low number. And I think just between Sac State and Aggie Square, we can produce as many as 25,000 to 40,000 tradable sector jobs over, over time. So I just want to close by saying that I'm completely committed to supporting the city's effort. I have tremendous confidence in each and every one of you. I hope that you have confidence in each and every one of us, and I'm looking forward to this becoming one of those moments and times where our community will be known as a before and after. And from this point forward, you know, I would like to see us become the most admired community in California, and I think it's within our reach, and I think Measure U can help us do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Barry, for coming, and for your leader, outstanding leadership.
Next speaker is Kathy Cresswell, then Frank Louie, then Michael Alt.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Cresswell. I'm the President of the Board of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and our board has not yet had the opportunity to take a, a vote on Measure U. We're going to be doing that in August. However, as you know, SHA has long advocated for increased local investment in affordable homes. We've been advocating for increased funding for the trust fund, for issuing of bonds, for looking at anything we can get to get more resources into creating more affordable housing, because Sacramento is facing an unprecedented housing crisis of historic proportions. Homelessness is rising, families have to choose between rent and other necessities, and more than five families are evicted every day in this city. Sacramento needs solutions that match the scale of this crisis. We can't just doing what we've been doing, because it's clearly not enough. That means the city must commit to immediate and extraordinary actions that match the scale of our crisis. A half-cent might have been enough previously, but now only a full cent can provide the potential to address our housing catastrophe head-on. Without significant and ongoing new funding for affordable housing, the crisis will continue, and the city will leave itself ill-prepared for competing for the new funding that's going to be coming from the state. In November, voters in the state have the opportunity to support $6 billion in funding for affordable homes. This funding is available statewide, but we have to compete for it. And as a former state official, I can tell you, communities that have local funding to leverage are the ones who can compete. Sacramento will not be able to compete without a significant new resource for affordable housing. And new state funding is going to be going to existing programs mostly, so that money's going to be available in early 2019, so we cannot wait for other solutions. And as evidenced by the earlier session, the city is committed to growing economic opportunity and justice in our community, but I want to remind you that prosperity begins at home. Families and workers need a safe and affordable, stable home as the foundation for true economic stability and growth.
Ms. Cresswell, your two minutes-
Affordable homes are foundation-
Make your final comment.
-for economic prosperity, and I urge you to support new resources for affordable housing development now.
Our next speaker is Frank Louie, then Michael Alt, then Dennis Newfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Frank Louie, and the Chief Operating Officer for the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, here speaking on behalf of Pat Foncachida in the chamber. The city of Sacramento is booming once again. It is no secret that there is excitement, growth, and opportunity downtown and around the city, but in many ways, Sacramento continues to struggle. New prosperity is not evenly spread among the rich and the poor, or within minority communities throughout our city. Our neighborhood businesses and families experience a continued lack of investment and opportunity as we grapple with rising housing, education, and other costs. For our city to grow and thrive, we have to invest in it. We believe investment in our communities is critical to attracting more businesses and development, and creating new jobs, and fostering a hub for innovation. As an active, engaged, small-business chamber for well over 20 years, we understand just how vital the role of small businesses play in economic development. Eighty percent of new jobs are created in exist, by existing businesses, eighty percent of existing jobs are at small businesses. And on behalf of the Minority Chamber, I can't emphasize enough the need for local economic development to be inclusive. I asked, I asked, what will the investment like, look like with Measure U pass, when Measure U passes, if Measure U passes? If you're serious about investing in the strong and vibrant Sacramento, there's only one right way to do it: inclusive economic development, an approach where all segments of the community reap the benefits of economic growth. Sadly, an inclusive approach is the exception rather than the rule in most US metropolitan areas. areas. Let's disrupt that trend. Sacramento is one of the most diverse cities in the country. We can't afford to waste this unique opportunity to be a model for true inclusion, an example to others to follow. Historically, the Asian community has played a pivotal role in helping to build this region. We can certainly play a role in helping to build a better Sacramento. While the chamber hasn't taken an official position on Measure U, we support a city that champions inclusive economic development. When we invest in blighted neighborhoods and existing small businesses and young people graduating from local high schools and colleges, we can create jobs and create an economy where prosperity is shared.
Mr. Louie, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment?
This is the kind of investment our region needs. Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Mr. Louie. And thank Ms. Foncachida as well.
Our next speaker is Michael Alt, then Dennis Newfield, then Timothy Davis.
Mayor, members of council, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. A pleasure to be here with you today. On behalf of our Board of Directors, we absolutely ask you to support Measure U and moving this forward. I think we have seen as a community, specifically a downtown, a tremendous amount of momentum and growth. Now is not the time to potentially impact that momentum. You know, we understand these investments that have taken place require not only resources, but require enduring economic investment. When we look at this community, we look at key opportunities for housing. The mayor has been very vocal on the need for affordable housing, the opportunities really to look at economic development. Many of the speakers have talked about economic development. This is our time to play a role. We are in a cycle right now without redevelopment, without key resources, that these funds from Measure U could play a role in helping to further what really has been incredible economic development in this region. You know, when we talk about old Sacramento, we look at opportunities to develop our waterfront, opportunities to really make a special place. We think Measure U could play a role in helping to offset some of the challenges in those areas. We will work with you. You have a partner with us, but Measure U passing is not an option. It's got to happen, and we urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Michael. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Dennis Newfield, then Timothy Davis, then Chris Smith.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to provide a little balance here to the testimony. First, this 100% increase in Measure U taxes is unnecessary. Revenues from Measure U over the past five years have been significantly above those projected back in 2012, almost doubling what was expected to nearly $1.25 billion. So Measure U's tax flow, based upon the one-half cent sales tax, should be more than enough to handle the spending priorities of this city. But prioritizing spending is the real problem here. You, as the ultimate managers of the city's treasury, have made many decisions based upon political issues rather than upon following prudent, common-sense spending parameters. A perfect example is the Streetcar Project. Some $8 million-plus has been spent on this project, which is no, which has no verifiable economic justification. This money just looks like it's been wasted. Another example, the Convention Center expansion. Cost estimates for the project have doubled, mayor had it at $120 million, to $240 million. And that new number, we know, is just hopeful speculation. And big public projects never come in as originally budgeted. This project could be a massive budget problem if overly optimistic revenue projections fail to occur. And long ago, someone once said, "You can't tax yourselves out of bad spending decisions." Let me repeat that. You can't tax yourself out of bad spending decisions. And that quote applies here today.
Thank you, Mr. Newfield. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Timothy Davis, then Chris Smith, then Craig Powell.
Timothy Davis, I'm the president of the Sacramento Police Officers Association, and I'm here to speak in favor of the sales tax renewal. Measure U has served a critical role in restoring and maintaining public safety in Sacramento. During the recent recession, the city eliminated 150 police officer positions and laid off police officers. The Police Department was devastated by these cuts and layoffs. Recruiting, hiring, training, and orienting new police officers takes years and is expensive. The city wasted millions of dollars by training and then laying off police officers, many of whom never returned to the city. With deep cuts in staffing, the department was forced to triage our officers' response. The department eliminated its problem-oriented policing teams, our traffic division, our gang enforcement teams, and many other units. Officers did not have time for community policing, but were forced to focus exclusively on handling 911 calls. Even with the focus on 911, the department stopped responding to some types of emergency calls. There was even a period of time where the department was unable to respond to residential burglaries. Measure U allowed the city to replace many of these laid-off positions. Over the past five years, the department has worked hard to restore the staffing to pre-recession levels. Even with the city authority to hire police officers, it has not been easy. Finding, recruiting, and hiring, and training quality employees that meet our community's high standards has proven to be a slow and difficult process. We have made significant progress. There are now 195 employees in the Police Department who received their funding from Measure U. Loss of Measure U would again force the department to make deep cuts. The department relies heavily on Measure U funding to provide the quality service level our citizens demand. Our department and our city cannot endure another round of cuts like those that occurred during the recession. I encourage the council to put the sales tax measure on the ballot so they can secure the needed funding to preserve our Police Department and our city.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Chris Smith, then Craig Powell, then Kevin Daniel.
Smith, Chris, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, city councilmembers, and city manager Chan. I'm Chris Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. The Metro Chamber is for business. Our advocacy programs support a connected region, prepare a ready workforce, elevate a vibrant community, and foster a strong business climate. As you are also aware, the funds from this measure will be sourced through businesses in the form of a sales tax on the consumer. As such, I share with you today several important perspectives on behalf of our membership and the broader business community as you deliberate and discuss this important policy consideration before you. One, the strength of our region's urban core is dependent on healthy and vibrant communities, which includes safe, walkable neighborhoods and streets. Two, a world-class education and skilled workforce system that is nimble to demands of a global economy will be key to the economic competitiveness of our city and capital region. By identifying and investing in socio-economically challenged neighborhoods, we will not only increase opportunities for our future workforce to achieve job readiness and meet employer demands, we will have a more inclusive and diverse workforce who will be able to be invested in our communities. Three, in order to build a dynamic business climate, which reduces barriers to entry and increases regional prosperity, our city needs to invest in infrastructure that incentivizes jobs, increase our innovation capacity, and enables business accelerators such as small-business development centers and projects including Aggie Square. Four, to both recruit and retain a skilled workforce, we need to also create viable housing solutions that result in increased supply and affordable options, all of which will reduce the pressure on our homeless and mental health services. While the Metro Chamber continues to evaluate support for this measure, we look forward to better learning from council, the transparency, metrics, and accountability that will be utilized to measure and report on outcomes. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to continued conversations.
Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Craig Powell, then Kevin McDaniel, then Zach Mosley.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, I'm Craig Powell, the president of ION Sacramento. We delivered you a letter today stating our position with regard to Measure U. We indicated that we were very concerned about the damage that a 1% sales tax hike would do to the working families of Sacramento, the poor, including the homeless, those on fixed incomes. And we indicated that while we are against any renewal of Measure U, we will stand down and not oppose actively, well, not campaign against, I should say, actively, a renewal of Measure U. But we will organize a strong, well-funded campaign to oppose any attempt to increase Measure U by a full 1%. This expiration of Measure U didn't come as any surprise. Your staff has been warning you for years to plan for a transition away from reliance on Measure U. This council has rejected all such advice, never set up any reserve funds to handle the transition. In the last two years, city revenues have increased 16%. Last year, it increased 6%. You are not dealing with a revenue problem here. Revenues are growing very healthily in Sacramento. This is not a matter of need. To the extent the mayor has listed 10 different spending priorities, we have to look at the math. And the actual math is that your projected pension costs over the next five years would eat up any additional revenue that you would have. So really, these are ephemeral promises of where this money would go. It would really go to pensions and rising retiree healthcare costs. But the most biggest concern we have is the impact of such a high regressive tax hike on the working families of Sacramento. This does real harm. This forces them into the choice between food, or cutting back on food, cooling, heating, medications, and so forth.
Mr. Powell, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
The admonition of the Hippocratic oath to the doctors is, first, do no harm. We implore you to follow that adage and restrain yourself from seeking to double the Measure U tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Next speaker is Kevin Daniel, Zach Mosley, then Kevin Fiera.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Daniel, the vice president of program for the Greater Sacramento Urban League. And we are in favor of Measure U, providing that we focus on the key items that the mayor spoke about today. One is neighborhood revitalization. We need economic development, opportunities to reverse the stagnation of our struggling communities. While we've watched the downtown corridor boom, we want the same thing to happen in our struggling neighborhoods. Also, affordable housing. I mean, some of our most vulnerable or suffering are seniors on fixed incomes, are the working poor, as well as youth programs. And for Sacramento to be a city where youth can thrive and grow, we have to support our youth. And we can simply support some of the existing programs out there right now. We have some great programs in Sacramento that just need some funding to expand and to grow. Also, dealing with jobs. So we had to report earlier to my job creation for the new economy. Well, we also need to put money into training. It'd be a shame to have all these jobs like Centene's coming with thousands of new jobs, but not have the workforce, the trained workforce, to get those jobs. So we want to make sure that if Measure U is passed, we go forward, that we make sure that Measure U is something for everyone. Everyone benefits from Measure U.
Next speaker is Jack Mosley, Kevin Fiera, Zach Mosley, Kevin Fiera, then Debra Drogers.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Zach Mosley. I live in District 3 under the leadership of Councilmember Jeff Harris. I'm a commercial real estate agent, and I'm happy to see the growth and investment that's been taking place in Sacramento. And I don't want this growth to be hindered or incentivized by additional taxes. It's sold as a one-penny tax, but what it really is, is a 1% increase in the costs of all goods. These sales taxes disproportionately affect lower-income families, and it's hurting the very people it's setting out to help. As interest rates rise, this is only going to exacerbate, this is only going to be exacerbated by credit card debt with variable interest rates and inflation. California is already taxed too high. People are leaving for other lower-tax states. We've benefited from people seeking affordability from the Bay. Why raise the taxes here and undermine that affordability? In my opinion, organic growth is better than the top-down government investments through tax increases. Government is typically not efficient at spending the people's money, as evidenced by, one, making this a permanent tax, and, two, increasing it. I have here, I don't know if we have a document cam, but this is a SACB article that was written yesterday. And I'm happy to see Councilman Jeff Harris say, "You're worried that one cent is too much. You want to do, you know, three-quarters of a cent." I say that doesn't go far enough. But the most, the best argument against this, Measure U, is that to keep the measure a general tax that requires only a simple majority to pass, city officials can't make specific ironclad promises of how the proceeds would be spent. You say that you're going to help people in lower-income communities, but what's to prevent this from going into the general fund? So I would implore you to vote against this. It sounds nice, but it's going to disproportionately affect those it's supposed to help. It's going to make Sacramento less affordable, and we can't even guarantee what this money's being used for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming today. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Kevin Fiera, then Debra Drogers, then Nikki Mohan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city councilmembers. Kevin Ferrera, executive director of the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. Measure U will provide the city with new resources for economic development, job creation at a large scale that for the very first time. It will also be a game-changer in unlocking the city's potential for to continue on with its transformational projects that it's been going on right now. We don't want that to stop. Also, we just want to applaud the mayor and the city council for taking on this bold venture, and we urge your support for this Measure U. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next speaker is Debra Drogers, Nikki Mohana, and then Rachel Bardis is our last speaker.
Hello, my name's Debra Droger. I work with Howard Jarvis Tax Payers Association. I'm also a board member of ION Sacramento. One thing I've been hearing a lot today from all of you is that there is systemic poverty. And a sales tax increase like this is a regressive tax. The people that make the lowest amount of money monthly pay the highest percentage of their monthly income in a tax like this. It really affects their spending. And you're talking about how you're trying to solve systemic poverty by taxing people more money, taking more of their money. I looked up the sales tax rates of the cities in California. Out of 654 cities, 251 of them have a sales tax of 8.75%, which is what your sales tax is going to, 8.75%. Ninety percent of those cities are located in Los Angeles County. The others are mainly in the Bay Area. Sacramento is not in Southern California. We don't have Southern California incomes. The Bay Area incomes are not in Sacramento either. You know, I know you hit this one up front, Mayor Steinberg, that this isn't a pension bailout, but it is. It's going into the general fund. It can go to pensions and retiree benefits. And so that's one thing that we're going to be hitting when we fight this, if this goes forward. You know, I live in Sacramento County, but I work in the city of Sacramento. And I will not give you 1% sales tax if this passes. I will do all my shopping within the county. You know, the cities in Sacramento that I can shop in that have a sales tax less than 8.75%, Citrus Heights, Folsom, Elk Grove, I can go to West Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, Marysville, Yuba City, Fairfield. I can even go to San Francisco and pay less sales tax.
Ms. Drogers, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikki Mohana, and then Rachel Bardis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Nikki Mohana, and I'm a local real estate developer focused on building attainable housing for our workforce here in downtown and midtown. I'm speaking today in strong support of Measure U. We are facing serious challenges across our state, nationwide, in our city, with rising income inequality and poverty. And our development and building industry has a large responsibility today to grow in a responsible way, being mindful of those challenges. And we want to be a partner with the community in coming up with solutions. But as you all know, we are facing serious difficulties when it comes to housing production. Our construction costs are rising exponentially, and we are having a difficult time reaching the levels of production that we need to ensure affordability. So we, you know, we're continually innovating with new construction methods, creative design, rethinking traditional models of housing. But even with that innovation, we still have a tremendous gap to fill. And Measure U can fill that gap. It can provide the opportunities for us to achieve the affordable housing that we desperately need. We can come up with more creative solutions to house our unhomed individuals with this funding. We have the opportunity to provide short-term relief while upholding a longer-term vision for economic growth that is sustainable and inclusive. I really want to thank you for your leadership and your willingness to be bold to grow our community in the right way, and I believe that Measure U will accomplish that. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mohana.
And Rachel Bardis.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, city manager. Thank you so much for taking the time and the effort and the energy, and also taking a lot of fire from not only our local constituents, but also from, you know, some of our leadership in our community about what Measure U could do to- in our community about what Measure U could do to some of the concerned citizens. It's extremely important, as a developer in Sacramento, for us to address affordability, housing, and the homelessness. And there's not a lot of solutions out there. I think that over the last five-plus years, we've seen nothing but a continued issue and a continued burden placed on not only the private sector but the public sector without having a lot of solutions. And I think with Measure U, we have the opportunity to create solutions that we all can feel really happy with, not only in the development of affordable housing but also with our economic sustainability, continued job growth, and to be able to offer a full spectrum of employment. And so I applaud you. I urge you to support Measure U, and thank you for your time.
We do have some more speakers, you know, that can either speak tonight or today. Either way, we're going to be taking up the item. I prefer, let's, this is the workshop setting where we want to hear from the public. I prefer that we hear from the speakers now.
I have eight more speakers. Mr. Mayor, Holly Wonder Stiles, Crisland Giles, Allegra Taylor. Holly?
Welcome.
I am Holly Wonder Stiles. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I'm from mutual housing California, and I'd like to focus on the opportunities that Measure U can create for affordable housing in our city. Mutual housing has been creating communities where working families can find stability with rents they can afford. In doing so, I might point out, we have created significant economic activity and created jobs. How has it been possible for us to create these communities? I have to say, it really is all about the money. What kind of money? Well, most real estate development depends on two types of financing, debt and equity. For affordable housing development, we typically attract equity by selling tax credits to private investors. We obtain those credits from the federal and state government, and the equity typically covers between 30 and 50% of project costs. We also, like most other real estate developers, obtain a bank loan. When rents are high, owners can get large bank loans. When rents are affordable to low-income people, the loans have to be much smaller, which means that affordable housing developers need a critical third kind of money, and that means development subsidies. For past successful developments, our subsidies have largely come from our combination of local sources, redevelopment, federal funds like home funds that are administered locally, and our local housing trust funds. Indeed, not a single mutual housing community would have been developed anywhere without local investment. We all know that redevelopment is no longer. We all know that federal housing dollars have come, have been reduced to a trickle, and unfortunately, our local housing trust fund has been severely limited in recent years.
Ms. Stiles, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
We ask you to give Sacramento voters the chance to create more local resources and to generate the most resources possible. Our city needs that, and in the face of affordable housing crisis, we all deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Crisland Giles, then Allegra Taylor.
Giles?
Hi. Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Chrissanne Giles. I am the Executive Director of Policy and Initiatives for the North State Building Industry Association. We have over 500 member companies and over 50,000 jobs regionally. Our organization will be considering Measure U support at our board meeting this week, and we are generally in favor of Measure U and its goals, and look forward to a continued dialogue with the mayor, the council, and the community on funding public safety, economic and housing opportunities, and extending Measure U and raising it to a one-cent sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Next speaker is Allegra Taylor, then Les Simmons, then Kay Ying-Hang.
Good afternoon. So I wore my Bill Black shirt because I'm here to represent the black community in every sector of Sacramento. I'm a voter. I'm a taxpayer. I'm tired of voting for things that my people don't benefit from. I'm sick and tired of seeing our communities left out when we vote for these increases in our taxes. I am sick and tired of us not being a part of the big picture. You give us all these promises about what you're going to do. What did you do with the last monies that you collected from us? How many of the black communities benefited from the last tax dollars that you got from us? And why are we giving more money to the police? Don't they have enough money already? So if there's going to be a vote for a tax increase, it definitely should not be an increase to where we're not going to benefit from it. So I'm not really for Measure U. I'm not really for it at all, because I don't see where we benefited from it in the past, and I don't trust that you all are going to have us, our community, black children, black business owners, black homeowners, our community, schools where predominantly black children go. How much money did you all spend in those areas with the last tax monies that you got? Now you want some more money, you're going to give us all these fake news promises as your president used that term. Listen here. We're tired. Stop promising the black community something that you are not giving us. If you want our vote, if you want my vote, show me what you're going to do with that money where it's going to benefit black people. Build black. That's what I'm all about. Build black. Take care of our people, our communities.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Les Simmons, then Kay Ying-Hang, and Rashid Siddique.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. As Mr. Hanson talked about, good to see you, that it's kind of like winter is coming, and I'm a Game of Thrones watcher as well. So I would say for folks that are in Winterfell and folks that are on the Wall, winter has already arrived. As a matter of fact, we've been there for a long time. We just learned how to make coats and stay warm. I would also say that through my role with Sacramento Act, which I'm a board member of, as well as a board member for the Macro Business District down in South SAC, District Eight, and a pastor over at South Sacramento Christian Center, we played a unique role in helping to pass Measure U through the first time around. Played a role in helping to really negotiate funds between public safety, fire and rec, and community development, our community-led violence prevention intervention programs. With the first time around, there was some commitments made to community-led violence intervention prevention programs that really put the community at the forefront of public safety as well, and some of those commitments weren't met. While they weren't met, I'm here in support of Measure U today with the ask of, in the push of, investing in underserved communities, investing in our communities that are unapologetically in a way that brings all boats forward, causes us to lift, causes this boat to be lifted as well. And there is some real inclusivity when it comes to our community as well. We're here, I'm here in support of it, but really pushing the council and the mayor and city manager to really ensure that those closest to the pain are helped driving the solution and the healing that is well needed in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor Simmons.
Next speaker is Kay Ying-Hang, Rashid Siddique, then Fabrizio Sasso. Kay Ying, K-A-Y-I-N-G?
Yes.
Hi, Ying, pardon me.
Hi, I hope it was me. I'm Kay Ying-Hang, H-A-Y-I-N-G, and I am here with the Center of CR Health Foundation. I send my regret from our president CEO, Chet Hewitt, who was here but unfortunately had to leave. And I am here to thank the mayor and members of the city council and the city manager for inviting all of us for this community conversation. The center, as you know, we have an explicit goal around helping to support healthy communities in the areas where we work, live, and play through an explicit lens around health equity and racial equity. And we are here in support of conversations and investment, public investment that really help to support economic growth and vitalities in our neighborhoods for not just today and tomorrow but for generations to come. So thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rashid Siddique, Fabrizio Sasso, and then Stephanie Nguyen.
Hello, council. I'm here representing Bill Black, and I would just like to come in support of Measure U. And a concern, yes, hoping that, as a concern that the young lady spoke of maybe three speakers ago, that hopefully we can trust that the council and the mayor will do right by the communities of need in the ways of construction, training, education, mental health, and employment. I know there's a lot of plans for the riverfront, for other constructions, and I hope that the council will see fit to try to include more of the city's workforce to employ during those buildings, and make sure that we have bonding provided for up-and-coming contractors who are looking to build their business, and that we keep most of our community dollars here in the community, and that we allow that hard-to-serve community to be a part of this renaissance that you speak of, Mr. Mayor, right?
Thank you.
Is that what you're using? So I'm...
A renaissance for all.
Okay. And I'm hoping that that includes the black community. Too often, it has not included our community, and Bill Black is just that, we're hoping that we get, you know, some businesses in this K Street Mall area. Hopefully, we can get some vendors in this Golden One that we all are so proud of, and hopefully, we'll have something on this riverfront that we have such a big plan to build up that black businesses are a part of that plan. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Rashid.
Next speaker is Fabrizio Sasso, and then Stephanie Nguyen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Fabrizio Sasso at the Sacramento Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO. The Labor Council has not taken a position on Measure U yet, but we are generally in favor of the goals and the vision that's been stated by the mayor on this measure, and we will be taking a position here soon. And we were proponents last time for the original Measure U because we understood the impact that it was going to have on the city's general fund and its ability to provide good quality public services. I had the pleasure of serving on the Project Prosper Working Group, and I was encouraged by the findings of the Brookings Institute and some of the other players around the table. They obviously presented some of the challenges that the city's facing, but also showed us the pathway to prosperity and opportunity. And there is an opportunity here to be more inclusive and prosperous for all communities, especially those who have been left behind in Sacramento through some of the stated goals like educational attainment, housing, high-waist jobs, economic development, workforce development, and greater connectivity between the neighborhoods. Yes, there is rising wealth inequality in this country. I've said it many, many times before in this forum, but we have to ensure that there is enough money to ensure that there's pensions that are going to be fully funded. That is the flywheel of this economy. We want to ensure that communities are not left behind and that workers are not left behind. And the way to do that is not just pass a one-cent sales tax, but also include other policies through this body that would ensure that workers have more voices on the job and that we're putting people to work in good middle-class jobs. And the ways we could do that is, you know, one, we can stop the bleeding with rent control or rent stabilization right now. We can increase minimum wage. We've tried that before. Labor police agreements and community workforce training agreements are all important steps that we can take in addition to this measure. So I want to thank you very much, and we'll be talking soon. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Stephanie Nguyen is our final speaker.
I get to be the final speaker, so I won't take up the entire two minutes. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Stephanie Nguyen. I'm the Executive Director of Asian Resources, and while the name is Asian Resources, we serve all communities. I've got an office in Oak Park, South SAC, in the city of Citrus Heights. You know, I heard a lot of people talk today about workforce development and economic development. I eat workforce development every day for breakfast, and so I'm here to tell you that as a member, the Executive Director of Asian Resources, we are very much so in support of Measure U. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and for your patience to be called up to testify, all of you, everybody's patients. Thank you. All right, that is our public testimony for the workshop. Let's turn it over to the members. And remember, tonight, we're voting, and in some ways, we're going to repeat this, although, and people are welcome, but I think we've heard your testimony, which we'll incorporate this evening. But this is an opportunity to have a little bit more of a freewheeling discussion without a motion to talk about where our members feel about this. We'll begin with Councilmember Carr.
I just want to clear the record a little bit without talking about Measure U. Several comments were made about this council not investing in the black community. And I'd like to just highlight a couple of things. First of all, many times when people say that, they're talking about District Eight. The largest ethnic group in District Eight is Latino. The second-largest group is whites. The third-largest group is Asians, and the smallest group in District Eight is African-Americans. People think it's a black district because we've had black representatives for the last 20 years or so, but it's not technically a black district. And I'd like to thank the council members for the investments that they have made in District Eight just since I've been sitting in this seat. $1 million for the Boys and Girls Club. You replaced the sidewalk on Meadowview Road. $300,000 so those kids coming out of Meadow Glen would not have to walk on Meadowview Road in the street in the rain. Last year, you gave $200,000 to Roberts Family Development. You're poised to do the same thing to Les Simmons Center. You extended the swimming pool hours at the Meadowview Pool. No other pool in the city got that. You extended the library hours at MLK Library and North Laguna Library. You established a cannabis equity program so those people who were seriously injured by cannabis being illegal could get into the business and have business opportunities. You invested $750,000 in black infant mortality to decrease the number of kids who were dying, specifically at the epicenter on Mack Road and Center Parkway. You approved public benefit hiring for our advanced meter water project, so people from those districts that have been typically underemployed and underserved could get a chance at one of those advanced water meter jobs. You invested $200,000 in yard maintenance and street cleanup, taking down chain-link fences and replacing them with drought-tolerant landscaping. Those are just the things that I can jot off as I was sitting here. So just to straighten the record, this city has not been neglecting any community, much less District Eight. And my sense is that we will continue to invest along with increases in revenue and increases in other programs that we're currently contemplating. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carr. Right, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the mayor has put out a pretty bold and innovative vision for economic development for Sacramento, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
This decision that we make today about Measure U is probably the biggest decision we'll make in the next four years. It's really a big one, and I would actually like to bring a couple of different components to the discussion here. The issue is not whether or not, if we got extra revenue, that we could use it to advantage. I feel that certainly we could. You've heard about a lot of programs that we could invest in, but I feel that we need to inject a little reality into this argument. And I'd preface this by saying that there is a very conservative voting bloc in District Three, and I happen to be one of that voting bloc. I'm fiscally conservative. I like to approach things like I did as a contractor, which is to get a project done on budget, on time, and well-built. The fact is that Measure U has afforded us the ability to make many restorations, which we promised at the beginning. The first year, it brought in, I believe, 28 million bucks, and now it's up to about 47 million annually. So it's been a tremendous boon to the city. The ballot language that's proposed here today is to give the voters choice on one issue only, and that is to double the tax to one cent. But the fact of the matter is, if we just renewed one-half cent Measure U, we would still benefit from those restorations, and we would not... we would not be cutting the services that we have restored thus far. And that is, to me, a viable option. We could make that permanent, and as such, would not have to do any set aside for the sunset of Measure U, and that would give us even extra revenue to work with. I believe when it comes to taxation, that voter choice is imperative, that all of the issues should be on the table, and the voters should be able to decide at what level they want to tax themselves. So that's an option. But there's more to this, and I'd like to give it a bit of a regional perspective. SB One is a very important bill that was passed, and it provides a lot of money to Sacramento City and County for road and transportation needs. And our road and transportation needs are very big. SB One is possibly going to be repealed in November, and that would have dramatic repercussions on our area. Just in the city alone, we would probably lose close to $15 million annually for road repairs. Additionally, speaking to our Public Works Director, we have $179 million backlog of road repairs that we need to affect in Sacramento just to maintain our pavement condition index. And I know that, you know, that's a lot of verbiage that most people aren't used to, but what it means is that even if we pass Measure U at one cent, we could take $25 million a year, and in seven years, we still wouldn't have enough money to repair just our roads, let alone affordable housing, let alone investments in many of the programs that we've talked about here tonight. Additionally, we have a CalPERS liability that is dramatic, and if you looked at the budget hearings that we had recently, or you looked at the budget document, you see that we have structural deficits starting next year that get deeper and deeper over the next five years, and we don't get out of that liability. The fact of the matter is, it will take most of a quarter penny of tax money to pay off that liability to CalPERS, and that does not even take into consideration that we have OPEB liabilities that are still north of $300 million, and we're pretty much ineffectual at even addressing that. I sit on the Sacramento Transportation Authority. I'm currently Chair of that board, and if SB One fails, we have an even greater need to pass a county-wide sales tax so that we can get road repairs and transportation money. Additionally, I sit on the RT Board. RT needs an infusion of money. If Sacramento passes a one-cent Measure U, it leaves a lot less space and ability to pass a tax at STA, let alone a separate tax issue for RT. RT could use a quarter cent and could use it badly. In the Project Prosper staff report, it said that a big piece of equity is having a fully functioning transit system so that people of moderate income can get where they need to go when they need to get there, to access jobs and so forth. I quite agree, and so keeping RT in a good condition is extremely important piece of equity. So there's another issue, too, I'd like to bring up, two more quickly. It is true that taxes are regressive. They hurt people of moderate and low incomes the hardest. Next is, there is a correction coming. We've been, and we now are at 110 months of expansion of our economy. In history, in the history of US, the longest period of expansion that we've had is 120 months. The average after a recession is 45 months of expansion before the next correction. There is a downturn coming. Just ask Jerry Brown. He'll tell you. So we have to keep that in mind because people of moderate incomes, so actually, people of all incomes get squeezed if there's a downturn. All that taken into consideration, the only difference that I have with the mayor is whether or not a one-cent Measure U tax can pass. I happen to believe that there's very substantial risk involved here. Amazingly, Sacramento-area local firefighters, Local 522, put out a letter, and, Chris, I'd have to say that I'm delighted and pleased that you and I agree on something, finally.
They stopped the presses.
So I'd like a couple of quotes. "A large amount of opposition" is cited in this letter to "a one-cent Measure U. Significant risk to the city. What is the alternative plan if the city fails to pass this in November?" That it could quite possibly fail in November. "Concern about the city's essential services." I agree with all those concerns. I think that they're well-stated. So I don't have a comfort level that a one-cent Measure U will pass. I know that there have been polls placed that show support for one-cent Measure U, but I can tell you, in my district, I've talked to an awful lot of people. I mean, a lot of people, and not one person said they would vote for one-cent Measure U. When I made the case that we could do three-quarter cent, so if we upped it one-quarter penny, we could sail through our CalPERS liability and have some spending cash left over, maintain the restorations that we already have via half-cent Measure U, to a person, they said, "That sounds like a plausible plan, and I would definitely support that." I think it's a reasonable way to go. Now, you know, some people believe in polls, some people believe less in polls, and this poll was not quite robust enough to convince me that the best way forward is to only give the voters a chance to vote on a doubling of Measure U to one cent. There are other ways to go. So I'll wrap it up here. I think that a better way to go is to give two options to the voters. One is to ask them if they would reauthorize Measure U at half cent without a sunset date, and then to ask for another ballot measure, to ask for a quarter cent increase so that we can get on top of our CalPERS liability and also have extra cash, which we can spend for any of these programs that the mayor has delineated. So that would be my motion, Mayor. You know, this is a discussion.
Not a motion. Tonight would be appropriate.
Okay. Well, so I'll save that for later. I'll just close by saying that I think that voter choice, when it comes to taxing themselves, is imperative, and I will always go for that approach. We haven't given the voters enough choice or the complete information about what they're voting on. If a one-cent Measure U failed, our only alternative would be to do a special and emergency election next year, probably in March. If we failed to do that, and if we failed to attain the reauthorization of one-half cent Measure U, we would have an immediate $50 million deficit in July and start laying off a lot of people in this city. So whatever happens, we need to get at least a half cent. It's really just a matter of what is the best strategy to move forward to attain that level and hopefully, a little bit more. But we need to give the voters the choice.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Excuse me. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. It doesn't look like any other council members are signed up to speak, so maybe we'll have to have this conversation more later. One of the things I want to say is first, I appreciate everybody who came out today. A lot of you are well-known to us because you're part of the believers in this city. I know many of you work hard every day. You love the city, and you show it by showing up in places like this when you probably have other things you want to do. But also, I know it because you've given us so many chances, particularly when I think about Darryl Roberts, Les Simmons, Allegra, who've come here to challenge us to keep the promises that we make. A couple of years ago, I was working on the Measure B campaign with some of the folks here, and we came just short on that, to invest in roads and transit, and Councilmember Harris mentioned that. And I think what it came down to was people wanted to know, and we were very close, that they were going to get what they said we were going to give them. In the end, though, with a general fund tax, a general obligation tax, we can't obligate ourselves. And therein lies this irony or challenge or potential for letting people down. Because, and Laney, I welcome you to put it up, I believe there is a recession coming. We just rode out one of the deepest recessions. I'm fearful that if we bond out a large chunk of this revenue, that we'll end up in the same position that our neighbor to the south did, Stockton. And we have to just be very prudent. Sales tax does affect particularly people of low incomes disproportionately. But when I look at the, Laney, do you have the recession chart that Dawn sent out?
I just saw it.
Okay. Basically, what it says is that in a modest recession, the city would, by 2024, be up to $51 million into a structural deficit. The extra revenue from this measure, and it's not the amount of the tax. I think that is so much in question with the public. It's that word "trust." Barry used the word "trust." Les, I believe, you used the word "trust," Pastor Simmons. I think people want to know they can trust us to do what we're going to say. Some things may be out of our hands. If revenues go down, there's only so much water left in the bucket to pay for salaries and then debts. CalPERS, as we've heard, is dramatically increasing our pension payments, and those are promises that were made a generation ago to people who still may be working or those who've retired. And we have cut those retirement benefits during the recession, but it takes about 20 years for PEPRA, 20 to 30 years, for those changes we made to really affect our general fund. The other thing is, in about the mid-2020s, we see a lot of the bond debt incurred in the 1990s and early 2000s begin to come off of our general fund debt. So we're in this skinny period for about 10 years that a recession will exacerbate. And so I just want to make sure that as we walk away from this today, and I haven't fully decided what I'm going to do tonight, but I tend to believe the voters should be given the choice, and I tend to believe that the voters will figure it out, whether they want it or not, and then hold us accountable, and I believe that the people in this room will do that. But that, there is a real chance that we will not be able to deliver on these promises. And as long as everybody understands that, that debts, pensions, all those other things are going to drink from the same well, and that we have to pay those first, the money left over will be available for the community. And I believe this community is a great community. I love Sacramento. I want to invest. Larry Carr mentioned some of the investments. Rick Jennings, our great District Seven council member, has led the Gang Task Force. We've put $1 million a year into that. We've put millions and millions into homelessness, and we'll probably put millions and millions more. We're attempting to invest in a bunch of different things that will change our economic outcome, but I think it would be unfair to the public not to be eyes wide open. And that very well may mean we embrace one cent, but we understand the risks of that, and the risk that some of those communities that are crying out for help may not have as much available. And if people are willing to go down that road with us, I think that that is a perfectly good choice for the city. Indeed, we have to find ways to continue to invest. I am aware that we're in a larger region, and the city of Sacramento bears a lot of the burden to invest, particularly in the communities we're talking about, because there's not a lot of other cities that have the wherewithal that we have to do it, and so we have to do it. Also, I believe, Mr. Mayor, and you know better than me, but our next governor may be poised to restore some form of redevelopment, and that hopefully should bring in some money for affordable housing. But we also have to do our part, and we've missed very critical projects that haven't come through because of the mismanagement, I believe, of some of the resources we have to build affordable housing. And if this gives us a chance to create reform, to deliver resources, but also to fairly invest so that we can help the people who need it most, I'm in favor of letting the folks decide. But it's going to be really up to this council to figure out ways to keep those promises. I don't want to make a promise that we can't keep and let people down again. That would be one of the worst outcomes I can think of.
Steve, I want to thank you, Vice Mayor, for your comments. I just want to respond on just one item, and I'll save my dialogue with Councilmember Harris for a little bit later. You're absolutely right. I do think that the probable incoming governor may be interested in redevelopment. I will guarantee you one thing, if and when, hopefully, it comes back. There will be a significant local match requirement in order to take advantage of whatever that new resource is, and if a city does not have a robust housing, whatever you want to call it, I call it Housing Trust Fund, a robust Housing Trust Fund, then those dollars will stay on the table, and more than stay on the table, they will go to other cities. And that's true of the, as Kathy Cresswell said a moment ago, those are requirements of the bond measure that's on the November ballot, and it's going to be true of any future funding stream. And so you're absolutely right. There may be more opportunity for resources, but it's going to come with a requirement that we do our part as well.
And Mayor, if you give me a little bit of room.
Yeah, of course.
I forgot to say one other thing. Laney, you found that chart, and then, Mr. Treasurer, you have a chart I just wanted to show real quick. Can you both?
I'm going to get up to the, oh, we can do it.
So just for the public's sake, this is the recession model that I was referring to, and you can see that costs sort of continue as revenues decline. Our economic uncertainty reserve would provide a buffer for some of that, but certainly, some of these additional revenues would be required. And then, Mr. Treasurer, just back to this point about the bonds, you have a chart about when some of the big bond debt falls off our general fund. And the reason I asked this, and I wasn't very clear about giving you the reason why I brought this up, but I believe in the discussion about bonding this out, we're going to be in a much safer position if we can do pay-go for a while so that we give time.
If we do what, I'm sorry?
Pay-go, which is not bond out, but set aside resources, whether it's for affordable housing or any of these things, because right about 2023, we see a giant drop, about 5% of the general fund will be freed up from bonds that are paid off. And then, there's another big drop from the, those are from the 90s bonds, and then, there's another big drop in 2035. And so if we can stage this investment in a way that gives us the most flexibility in a recessionary environment, I believe we'll be poised for a resilient city government and a regional economy that depends on the city to succeed. And so that was the point I was trying to make there. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
I'll wait for my comments, but I want to respond to you. I think it's a very good and fair point, and I want to make sure that I respond to it, okay? Councilmember Ashby.
Mayor, I know we're pressed up against a deadline here because we have a closed session and then an evening meeting, but I just wanted to at least end on a note that's really positive. I think this is a huge moment for Sacramento, and every single person that came to the podium, no matter what they think about Measure U or our strategy moving forward, and even every colleague noted the importance of having funding moving forward for the city of Sacramento, whether that's to address pensions, or to address Build Black, or for housing, or for Housing Trust Fund, or for public safety, or you dream it, anything, MLS, the rail yards, light rail. When Bonnie Pennell retired from this council, I did my top 10 list of reasons why I wanted to be like District Eight, because there are so many things in District Eight that don't exist yet in the North Area, like light rail, like a hospital. All of those things were hard-fought by that council member. This is an opportunity for us to create a resource base, to have the staff we need to provide the services in every community. It's not just public safety, but it is definitely our top priority, as the mayor started this conversation. And that type of public safety could be youth outreach. It could be the Gang Task Force. It can be the Summer Night Lights programs. It can be childcare, as Councilmember Garrett and I have both repeatedly mentioned over the last few years. It could be community-oriented policing, bringing back traffic, bringing back pop. The last time that we did this, we were doing citywide brownouts. That means Russian roulette with closing down fire stations. I never want to do that again. It's scary. It's horrible. If ever there was a time in our history, right now, think about the importance of firefighters to you, to all of us, right? We are an hour and a half away from Reading. You want to underfund the fire department? I don't. And I want to make sure there are good, solid ambulances that serve every corner of our city, that people feel safe when they live here, that kids have opportunities. The Housing Trust Fund needs to increase. We can't just rely on projects like Panhandle and Greenbrier to dump millions of dollars into it. The city has to invest in that Housing Trust Fund, and then we have to use that money to match whatever we can convince the legislature to give us so that we can provide affordable housing for people. Measure U provides us those opportunities. We want, Councilmember Warren's not here, but we want a library in Del Paso Heights, and we don't just want any library in Del Paso Heights. We want a partnership in Del Paso Heights that creates a space where people can come there and eat breakfast, work divorce development with Stephanie Nguyen. that creates a space where people can come there and eat breakfast, work divorce development with Stephanie Nguyen. We want kids to come there, we want after-school programs, we want this to be the hub of activity on a street that already has some great entities on it. That only happens if we get this across the finish line. We want destinations in Sacramento, we want inclusivity, we want large and small businesses. We want to be able to put together incentive packages that recruit large Fortune 100 companies. We also want to put together incentive packages that help grow our own small businesses into Fortune 100 companies. Those things become possible under this vision and we can do it. You want to address illegal dumping in District 2? We need to hire more people in our code enforcement department to do that. I want to do that. We need to do that. This is our opportunity, this is our moment. You want animal control, you love the Front Street Animal Shelter? This is the opportunity. We are this close to having a shelter that only puts down animals that must be put down. This close, this close. Measure U gets us there. So I think this is a really exciting day for Sacramento. I can't wait for the vote tonight. I'm thrilled at the opportunities. No, we won't be able to do every single thing, but won't we be a better city when we do some of these things? I think we can all agree on that. Mayor, thank you for the vision. I think this is fantastic and look forward to the vote tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, I'll be brief.
By the way, if I may, I'm sorry, just because I don't, we do have a closed session, but in conferring with the city attorney a moment to go, there's only one item we have to take up tonight, which should be, take only a couple of minutes. And I think this is important enough discussion that I want to make sure that this dialogue, that we can continue at least for another 20 to 25 minutes, if necessary. So I just, I know people are feeling, we've got to get it in closed session, but I want to make sure that we've got a chance to finish the discussion. Rick, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to stop for a second and thank you for your bold leadership in this whole conversation. And I also want to thank the public for coming out today, listening to each one of the speakers that came up. I've got five pages of notes of everything that you said. What you said about the unkept promises, what you said as far as what we can do better within the black communities, what you said as far as the underserved communities, the communities in need, the hard to serve. You gave me so much material that says that this is the right time, Barry Broome, this is the right time. This is the change agent that can change Sacramento, right? And you gave us the ability not to just to restore, but to be able to restore and then grow. And so I invite all of you to come back tonight as we have this conversation and we make this decision to move forward. I invite you to all to come back if your time allows you to, because this is a serious conversation for a serious time in Sacramento. And I couldn't have said it any better than Councilwoman Ashby said it, as far as the bold things that we can do and the changes that we can make in Sacramento in order to make Sacramento the city that we all love and want to live, work, and play. So I invite you to come back tonight for a great conversation tonight.
Thank you, Rick. Just a couple of additional comments. So when I was in the Senate, one of the things I loved was caucus, which you could call at any time to gather all of your colleagues in one party, or you could caucus as a whole. And you could actually talk confidentially, one-on-one, one-on-30, about difficult issues and reason through things. And one of the changes for me in coming back to local government is my respect for, I want to emphasize that, respect for, but frustration sometimes with the Brown Act. And because what it says is you can only talk to three of your colleagues about a particular issue. And this is a, not existential, but this is a vital issue for Sacramento. And I chose, right or wrong, and you can always, who do you choose? I chose the three members of my Budget and Audit Committee to have conversations about this as we were developing it. So by definition, I've not been able to have this conversation with Councilmember Harris that he started and I want to continue a little bit. Or with Councilmember Hanson, or with Councilmember Carr, with Councilmember Gera. And I don't know what to say, I'm sorry, because my instinct and my way, of course, is different. And I was trained in a way that said, you know, you sit down with everybody and you reason through and you've got to make the compromise, you make the compromises. We're limited here. So I'm not complaining, I'm just noting that that's the reality here. And so that's why this conversation is all important. But really important to me and why I want to take a little bit more time, because I want to have a, I want to have a dialogue with my colleague, Councilmember Harris, and a little bit with the Vice Mayor. And first of all, I think all of you, not only have the right, you have the responsibility behalf of your districts, on behalf of the whole city, to form your own point of view and to vote your values, vote your constituencies, and vote your conscience, period, end of story. And you will always have my highest respect as you do that. That's for one. But I want to talk about some of what you said, because, and rebut a little bit, or at least dialogue with you. You said, Jeff, that we won't be cutting if we renewed a half cent. And of course, the red ink, and by the way, I'm very clear that when we get back in January after its passage, I want to fight for the lion's share for inclusive economic development. You may say we ought to fight for services, it's okay. The one thing that is clear is that renewing the half cent is going to leave us with significant red ink going into the future. And the consequences are not only around city services, it's about our capacity to be able to build and grow and do more. You referenced the 8.75%, and I appreciate it. And by the way, I've always said, and I will say this clearly, raising taxes itself is no virtue. The question is what it is you get for asking the people to contribute more money. But I want to put 8.75% into context here for a moment, because while it would be the highest in our region, there are 343 cities in California that have a higher sales tax rate than 8.75%, many of them 10%. So in terms of us sticking out like a sore thumb, being an outlier, especially with a vision to invest this in growing a modern economy, I don't think that it does stick out. You mentioned the need, regional transit, the need for transit, I completely agree with you. There would be more capacity for RT in 2020, or the Transportation Coalition to come back to the countywide voters. But here's the other truth, because this is a majority vote measure, you have every right and ability, and by the way, I'd have a completely open mind about coming back in January when we pass this and saying, "Members of the council, we ought to spend 1/8, 1/4 of this on building a more modern transportation system within the city of Sacramento." If you think that that is the most important piece of inclusive economic growth and development, which you can make a very good and rational argument that it can be. So you have that exact opportunity, by the way, and contrast that with requiring a 2/3s vote from county voters in 2020 or beyond to try to accomplish a broader transportation fix. You did say that it was regressive, and this is an argument that I want to completely acknowledge. You're right, you're right. This is not the best form and it's not what I would choose, but it is what is possible. So I agree, I acknowledge your argument. The fourth issue that you raised is can it pass? And I would never seek to second-guess your or any member's knowledge of your district, you know it better. But I do appreciate that you pointed out that your survey was an informal one. And so I want to just talk about some other numbers here for a moment, because I think they're important. You know, we've done a series of four polls over the course of the last year and a half. And while polls are not infallible, when the polls speak to a continuing trend, it's at least informative. And the first poll we did was a city-funded poll as part of the budget when I first became mayor in April of 2017. And in three out of the four polls, we asked voters to differentiate between 1/2 cent and 1 cent and asked them whether or not it would make a difference. In the first poll that was confounding, April 2017, the voters said that they would approve a full cent compared to a half cent with four additional percentage points of support for the full cent over the half cent. In August of 2017, it was a little different, but not dramatically so. The voters said they would support a full cent, 62% to 32%, and a half cent, 65% to 29%, within the margin of error and a three-point difference. In January of 2018, the numbers were identical for both a full cent and a half cent, 58% to 38% for both. And so what that tells us in terms of the risk here is that the risk is relatively comparable, you know, especially as we're going back to renew something that the prior council said was temporary in the first place, just the half cent. Now, I think there's a very compelling reason, obviously to extend it. But the risk that you speak citywide, there's no guarantees in life or in politics. But I think given the opportunity, and the opportunity to invest in the ways that we are talking about here, with every opportunity for you and others to say, "This is the most important investment, including transportation," makes it, in fact, worth supporting. There's one other information item that, if I can find it in my stack here, that I do want to share as part of this discussion. Give me just 10 seconds here, please. And this are the number of cities that have taken 1-cent sales tax measures to the voters in the years 2016 and 2017. I can't find it, but I think I remember it by heart, and if I'm wrong here, I will promise you I will correct this for the record this evening. But I believe of a number of 1-cent sales tax measures that were put before the voters in 2016 and 17, that well over 90% of them passed majority vote measures. And those numbers are in the staff report here. When I combine 16 and 17, okay, I want to clarify that tonight when I can find my paper, sorry. But the percentage regardless is high. And so everything is risk and reward, and you have to make that decision for yourself. But I would go back to, you know, what, to the essence of this for you and then ask you, "How do we finance the thousand tiny homes that you champion? How do we finance the triage centers that you have championed on an ongoing basis?" Because I can't go out there and raise, you know, ask the health systems and others for a million, $5 million every single year, as I have been doing. How do you finance the establishment of the Pearl District and the River District? How do you fund all of the career technical education which you champion in the workforce development under this structure with that red ink, without our ability or capacity to be able to invest more in workforce development and economic development? And then in terms of myself, I will just say to you, and this isn't a reason to vote for it, but I'm just going to tell you, since we're having this private dialogue here. This is the reason I ran for mayor, and I appreciate your support, but this is the reason. You know, I didn't come up with this when I was running, but it's this idea. It's this idea that if we're going to take the next step after the Golden One Center, if we're going to actually invest in neighborhoods, that we need more capacity because we are a one-off city with great intentions. Steve and I have talked a lot about, you know, 10 years, the 11 years it took to do the Powerhouse Science Center, that he heroically championed to fruition just as a matter of will. You know, it shouldn't be that hard on everything we do. So those are my arguments back to you. And Steve, the only thing that I want to clarify for you, with you, is on this bonding issue, which is, I know, your largest concern. And maybe I have overstated this. Bonding is only one potential strategy for creating an economic development fund. And nothing we do tonight mandates it. I mention it because the excitement to me of being able to take an ongoing source of revenue and create a $450 million trust fund, I think illuminates what is possible. But if you and our city treasurer and others say, "Let's do pay-as-you-go for the first X number of years in order to, in order to surf the waves of the recession," I'm not trying to establish the trust fund day one. It's an idea, it's a mechanism, a potential. And by the way, I'm not talking about using all the money or the second half of the money for it. And so I don't want to get so, if that's the concern, we've got so many, as you've said, we have so many decisions to make, so much work to do, and I want to do this right. All I want is to give you and us and our city more ability, more capacity to be able to do more. And finally, the pension crisis, which isn't necessarily what you raised, but some of the opposition. I'm going to end where I began. Yes, we have a pension and OPEB crisis. And I believe, and I ran on this, that if we don't grow in an inclusive way and create more opportunity for more people and increase our tax base, we aren't going to solve our pension crisis. Cannabis will help as that develops or envelops, but that's not what I want to, that's not what I want to, not the horse I want to ride, certainly not exclusively, towards our prosperity. Thank you for the dialogue and the opportunity, and maybe I'll have more when you rebut my rebuttal. So, thank you. Jeff?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have to say I'm deeply flattered that you prepared so well to rebut my concerns.
I was taking notes. I'm a lawyer, don't forget.
So, you know, I actually agree with you more than you might think. It's clear that without more revenue, there are many things we can't achieve. That's not under dispute here. My concern is whether or not a 1-cent measure can pass. And if it doesn't, the repercussions are rather dire for us. That's really the only point of contention between yourself and I.
What about those three, what about those three polls that I described?
Well, so I get that, you know, when you dive into polls, there's hard yes and there's soft yes. And, you know, I tend to go more with talking to my constituents than believing in polls. Case in point, there were polls when I was running that said I would fail flat. So, you know, I mean, that informs my reality, but given the...
A bad poll, I might say.
Yeah. Given those numbers that you cited, what would be the problem with putting two measures on the ballot that would assure us that at least a half cent could get reauthorized so we don't get stuck and then allow the people to make a decision about taxing themselves to achieve all of these wonderful programs that you've laid out?
We're not, we are giving people a choice. We're putting this, we are putting this measure on the ballot.
Giving them the choice to vote on 1 cent or nothing else.
I do understand that.
So I just want to make clear that that's my concern, that I perceive more risk there than you do. That's really the essence of what we're talking about. I really don't want a reauthorization of Measure U and an uptick. I really don't want it to fail, but I fear that offering the only choice, the only choice as a 1 cent, a doubling of Measure U, I believe, based on, you know, interviews that I've done in my district, the fact that...
It's also a citywide election.
I understand that as well. So it comes down to the belief in the poll and the numbers. But I think that we can win if we give the voters the choice and not take the risk of losing our half-cent Measure U and going out with an emergency election. So that's really the point of contention that I have. Everything that you laid out about investments, it's all true. I also believe that we can only achieve a fraction of what you laid out, even if we get a 1-cent Measure U.
I understand.
But it would be wonderful, and our job on this council would be a much happier place if 1-cent Measure U passed.
That mean you will, that means you will campaign for it even if you vote against it?
If this, I'll tell you tonight. Put it this way, I want the city to prosper and I want to move forward. And if this council does not like my idea, I will take action to make sure that the city prospers.
Good answer. Okay, I think I'm getting it. Good, thank you. Steve? I'm sorry, let me, can you?
I'm sorry, let me, can you...
Thank you, Daryl.
Sorry, Vice Mayor.
I'm just teasing you. As you laid out, there's a Brown Act challenge. We couldn't have this conversation really until today, right now. And I feel a little sense of happiness and loss, that we're finally having it, is the happiness. The loss is that I think if we had been able to start this conversation a while ago, we'd probably all be in the same place now. And I think that you, this is a very monumentous decision, but as we struggle between our two roles as representatives in one factor, as Mr. Harris was talking about, what his constituents think, and as trustees, there's no doubt that whatever we decide tonight will have important ramifications and decisions that follow to come. And I appreciate you talking about the bonding piece. As the youngest member of this council and somebody who came up with very little, like some of my peers, I still have student loan debt 20 years later almost. And I, it's not lost on me that a lot of the public, who is in the same spot, they see the interest that they pay on the loans as lost opportunity. Our general fund, in particular, has terrific burden from past generations investing in things, and that's not bad. But there is lost opportunity with the interest payments. And so if we can maximize the investment by not borrowing a huge chunk and then paying half of that back in interest, I, I think that gives this next generation a chance to inherit a city that's freer of debt, has more opportunity and more flexibility with resilience when a deep, long recession comes again. And so I appreciate your comments, but that's, that's the genesis of my concern as a trustee and as somebody who's lived watching so many of my peers not be able to buy a house, to start families, and is a real, is a real thing that our city has to grapple with.
I, it's a good discussion, and, and there's no commitment being made tonight about how we do it, right? Okay, thank you so much. Councilman Carr, last comment?
Yes, I know we have a lot of challenges discussing things, but this has been a good I've heard about these polls for some time. I heard rumors about them six months ago, but I haven't seen any. Is this permissible, Ms. City Attorney, for us to see the poll results?
Well, I don't know.
If they're part of the city's records or files, then they'd be available for review.
I, I think there's a way. Figured out.
Before 5:00?
What?
Before 5:00 PM?
Oh, sure. I mean, we can, if it's permissible, absolutely. We get, I'm happy to, how about, we, I'm looking at my, my excellent staff back there. Hello, all of you back there, and my, and the mayor, and the mayor's staff as well. We do have all four, do we not? Okay, then it shall be done. It's okay. Look at the numbers.
Thank you.
They become a public record then? Okay.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Perhaps we could have some executive summaries of those prepared quickly for the, our colleagues, and then those executive summaries would be part of the public record and would clarify maybe if Councilmember Carr could be really specific about which, in particular, which things he wants to know, and then perhaps the mayor's chief of staff could help.
The debate will not start till 6:30 or so, right? We've got public testimony, we got, we can, we can summarize the four polls with all of the, all the highlights and the, and...
Concerned a little bit about Councilmember Harris's admonition that a lot depends on how the poll was responded to, as well as what the question was.
Of course.
If we, and a summary may not give us that.
Well, I, well then, I would say it publicly, since I can't talk to you about it privately. These polls were done, they were not so-called push polls. These, these polls raised every straw, man and woman, in terms of opposition, including what we heard from Mr. Powell and, and everybody today, and hard-hitting, all of it. And of course, the arguments in favor. And then, you know, you have, you test it out, and the numbers that I described to you are, are the numbers that ended up coming out. I mean, in some sense, you know, I'm asking you to trust me in terms of the poll. You make, you make your own judgment, but the polls, the polls show, and we talked to our pollster and everybody, that we have a very good chance. We've got to run a great campaign, we've got to get the message out, we've got to do what we, what you do to educate, inform, and persuade the voters. And that's exactly what we intend to do.
I didn't mean to insinuate that I didn't trust you.
I know you don't, I know you don't, it just, it's...
I just want to see the poll.
Okay, figured it. Yeah.
There is a risk that we could fail in this election. So we have to be clear with our constituents what would happen in that event, because, quite frankly, losing Measure U altogether would be disastrous for the city.
Agreed.
We all agree on that. So I think that there should be some discussion tonight about what would happen if one-cent Measure U did fail, what, what our alternative course could possibly be.
I think the only thing that's, that a little bit is unfair about phrasing it that way is that you could ask the same question, what have, in fact, Consuelo made her presentation, I think, sort of, rather, what happens if the half cent fails? So I just, because it's the same answer. We know what happens. It's a $50 million hole in the budget. We know it.
No, but what would we do if...
What we would do, what we would do, Councilmember Ashby, I think, spoke to it, or somebody spoke to it, which is that you'd, you'd go to a special election in March, we would have the ability to call that, and you would, and you'd, obviously if it failed, you'd do the half cent, and, and it would be a different kind of a campaign, different kind of an effort. That's what you would do. And Measure U does not expire until Mar, until March. Yeah, so, so there is that fail-safe, if you will, and, but I don't think we'll ever get there. I'm confident we won't. I have no guarantees, but I'm confident we'll never get there.
It's clear you're confident.
I'm not, never overconfident, but you know, I'm the guy who did Prop 63 when everybody said, are you crazy? Putting together a millionaire's text to fund mental health in California? Passed. I led the state through, helped lead the state with legislative leaders and two governors through the worst recession in the state. It's history. And over four years, I mean, hard, hard stuff. I, I deliver. I'm not saying, I'm not guaranteeing it, but yeah, I ran in part because this is what I want to do. Want to grow in the, in the right way, in an inclusive way, and build back the neighborhoods. That's what I want to do. And I don't, if I were, if these polls were, were negative, I wouldn't put this city in such a position, just because it's what I believe. It's a risk-reward. I think that we've got a very good chance to pass if we're together, we're united and we, and we make the case. Okay? Okay? Good deal. Thank you. We will reconvene in...
Do you want to adjourn to closed session?
We will adjourn to closed session, yes.
Do you want to get a break?
Okay. I need it. Okay, we're, we're in recess. Thank you.